Good morning, it's Wednesday, May the first. This is a special meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. We are at the 114 West Buffington Avenue location in Anderson, Texas. We have called the meeting to order. We would ask that you rise for the invocation, that you remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. And we'll ask Ralph Thompson, if you would, please, sir, to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Father God, we come thanking you again for waking us up this morning, then Father giving us health and strength. Father, we come here for a purpose. We realize, Father, that we are not owners, but we are only stewards. And that's your blessings now upon this court, upon each Commissioner, upon the Judge, and everything that comes across this court. Father, we ask your wisdom in how to handle each situation. And we give you honor and glory and thank you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We will open up the podium for public comments. If you have any public comments, we'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and if you will, if you'll limit your comments to two minutes or less, that would be excellent. While the crowd is gathering to make a line, I would like to give a quick announcement that on Saturday, this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m., at the courthouse, outside the courthouse, there's going to be a change of command for the Texas Army Guard from one officer to the next officer. If you've never attended a change of the guard, it's quite an experience. It's a very formal activity, and it will probably take about 45 minutes to an hour out of your Saturday morning, once you're here. But if you're available, that's going to take place. Again, it's a Texas Army National Guard change of command ceremony. And it happens to be 10 o'clock is when it's going to start. And the officer coming out of office is the mayor's son, Karen Hale, mayor of Plantersville. Her son, I know his last name's Hale, I don't remember his first name. But he's the commander, being relieved of duty as they change over command. So, anyway, that's this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m.
And if you want a parking spot, you better get here early.
Yeah, because they will have a few spots blocked off, but yes.
But they're expecting what, 500 soldiers is what I was told?
They are.
That's what I was told, so I don't know.
I didn't know that. I didn't know the number.
Where's this at?
Courthouse steps.
Oh, courthouse.
Okay, we've worked through the line of public comments, therefore, we're going to move on to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six, and number seven. Commissioners, three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, receive and approve the Grimes County First Quarter Investment Report for the period ending March 31, 2019. That's page four of this agenda. Item number six, approve monthly report submitted by the county treasurer for March 2019 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. That would be page five of the agenda. And consent agenda item number seven, consider and take action to approve budget amendments or line item transfers. There's no further discussion. I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, second, or by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now go to agenda item number eight, County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, discuss and take action to approve the professional services agreement with iDocket, see attachment number eight. Vanessa, let me say sorry to hear the loss of your mother-in-law, Ralph's mother.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Hope everything is going good with the family.
Yes, sir.
Would you tell us about agenda item number eight?
Yes, I'd love to. So, this is a company called iDocket, and they provide services to 134 counties in the state of Texas currently. And they will come in and scan all of our court records and make them available online, as well as our dockets. To anybody, like attorneys, even the general public, can go to their website, subscribe to their website, view our dockets, download print documents or case files that are public record. This would cut down on call volume, where people calling to find out when, who's on the docket, am I on the docket? Also requests for documents, they can retrieve these documents online, they pay the fee. It's no cost to the county to provide this service. And the county also will recoup 20% of all profits made off of those subscriptions. And we also get a per-document fee of a dollar a page. He came and demoed the product, and I was very impressed with it.
Have you talked with any of the other 134 counties?
I have not, but I am on the list, sir. And recently, there was a discussion on who uses this company and how they were, and there was, they all highly recommended it very much. Yes, sir.
I know it might be a bit of an accounting nightmare, but do you have any idea what the potential revenue might be that's generated off of that?
He told me that some counties can make a lot of money off of this.
Like Harris and Karen, is there?
Yeah, it just depends on the volume, you know, on the county. Of course, you know, to start, it would take a while maybe to get people aware of it, but we could definitely make that available to them.
And if I understand you, you said there was no cost to the county?
Yes, sir, there's no cost to the county. And that money goes directly back into, and basically how it works is, is they work with LGS, which is our current case management system. So, everything that gets entered into LGS every night will automatically be uploaded to their server and available the next day, pretty much.
Mr. Foltz, I know you reviewed the contract, and I know you're not for or against, but did you have any observations that you'd like to share with the court?
Oh, my gosh, you asked for observations?
Your top one. Your top one or two observations.
Yeah, you meant observation, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay.
I would just point out that we can, either party can terminate on 90 days' notice. So, there's no cost, it's 20%. It's paid to the county for anything that a subscriber pays, and we can terminate at any point. If, as long as the service is something that the county clerk believes is beneficial to the people of the county, I don't see anything that concerns me about the agreement.
And, thank you, sir. And Vanessa, not trying to, well, just ask a question.
Yes, sir.
This would not require any additional personnel, and it might even lighten the load of your, not reduce your staff.
It will actually lighten the load for Carolyn and our staff, because it'll cut down on the call volumes and the requests for documents. It will not require any work on our part, they will come in and do all the work, the scanning and everything, for us. And I've already talked to Diana Flor, the district clerk, and she's interested as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And Carolyn could use a little relief in her area with court documents.
She knows that, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Judge, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Sure.
I do have experience, not with this particular software program, but something similar, and it's very beneficial if you're working in and around the court system, to be able to access records.
Yes.
And I appreciate you checking into this, but one of the things that, it looks like it could be an expansive program throughout the county that would be of little financial ramification, if we can get the clerks on board, both you and the district clerk, as well as the JP courts.
And JP, yeah.
Could utilize this as well. I don't know if that's something that we want to open up that discussion for today, but I definitely think that it would be an asset.
Yes, I agree.
To the public, to access some of the records that are commonly in person.
Yes.
That you have to collect.
Yes.
Just my two cents.
Well, I appreciate your two cents, but since that's not on the agenda for the additional, we'll set that two cents aside, but along that line, it might be a good idea, Commissioner, that if the county clerk's office implemented this, and they had good reviews, then very quickly, we ought to have that discussion you're talking about.
I also wanted to add something.
Yes, ma'am.
It talks about, it redacts personal information.
Yes, so anything that has like a social security number on it, or anything like that, would be redacted, yes, ma'am.
And it's for civil, criminal, and probate cases?
Yes, that's correct.
Judge, could I make one other comment, kind of along the same lines as Commissioner Cox's two cents, but it's an observation and relevant, and that is that there was a freak-out moment when we began to realize that the AG said, "You have to allow people to come into the county clerk's office and take pictures of documents with their phones, and you can't charge them anything to do that." And so, the clerk had relied upon payments for copies, hard copies, in the office for decades, and to consider losing that revenue was caused somewhat of a panic. The trade-off, or the alternative, or the progress based upon technology is, anytime the county can obtain a fee by someone being able to sit at the house in their robe, let's say, and print stuff, as opposed to coming up here, that's the thing that we ought to be doing. And I would commend Vanessa's office for doing that. We now have real property records back to 1905 or something that are online, that you can sit at home and print those documents, and the county gets paid for that.
Sure.
It's not necessarily a loss of the fee, it's just a change, and to the degree that the clerks can spot opportunities like this, I think it's going to allow the county just to do a trade-off. Instead of those hard copies, getting paid for the hard copies, you're getting paid for somebody sitting at home. And all honesty, to reduce that foot traffic and reduce the interference, I don't want to say interference, reduce the fact that there are more people in that office than there would be without the public continuing to show up to make those copies, will make it easier for them to operate.
Yes.
Sure.
I do have a question on the subscriptions, on the monthly pricing.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, when it says the number of counties, is that the number of counties that the subscriber subscribes to?
Yes, they can subscribe to multiple counties. So, if you, if you're an attorney's office, and you do business in Walker, and Montgomery, and Harris, you can subscribe to all, more than one county, and they would just, you know, pay whatever that fee is. And then they have scold silver and bronze, you know, depending on how many documents they want to have access to per month, it looks like.
Is this for the everyday citizen, or?
Yes, it could be for anybody. I mean, mostly, it's going to be professionals, but it could be for anybody, pretty much. They can, they can do it on a per-document basis, I believe.
So, if I subscribe to one county, Grimes County, and I want to look at records, and I go with the bronze package of $19?
Well, they have what's called a basic access plan, where you get two free searches a day, and then you pay, it's really small print, but it looks like two CHIP, whatever that is, per case. They can view it, and then they can get the documents. They can, and then another good thing about this is, they have what's called tracking, case tracking, where if there's a case you want to track, every time there's a new motion filed, or a new document filed, they'll get an email notifying them that something new has been added to that case. But it says subscription reveals will be billed on the actual monthly number of counties searched.
Okay.
I don't see a lot of individuals using this, but they can if they want to.
And I assume that the juvenile records won't be available?
No, oh, no, no, those are, those are sealed. This is just probate misdemeanor.
I want to ask Commissioner Cox a question. Your past history with adult probation as an employee, not a participant?
Yeah.
Since the world is watching, is, do you think, is there opportunity for those folks to participate in something like this also?
Absolutely, yes, that's, I mean, we.
And actually, this service is free to the county employees.
Yeah, we, we had governmental access to other counties through a registration process that we didn't get charged.
I guess my, I guess my question, though, is, do you have people coming to adult probation to get information or records from that office?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not typically.
Okay.
I mean, but this, this particular type of program could be utilized by anybody wanting the information that's open to the public.
Yeah, like if somebody from their office wanted to see a case file, they could do that, and it would cost them because they're a county employee.
We, we do have a JPR JP One, Judge Akkord, do you, do you have a thought on, do you think this is better, or do you even know anything about this?
I've heard a little bit about it, and I do see where it would be very beneficial, because I can attest to the phone calls, and I mean, our docket's not what the county docket or the district court docket is. But we do have law offices consistently calling, checking on the status of things, or want to know what's been filed. So, I, and I think at some point in time, with the, with the growth that we're going to experience and all that, I do believe it'd be something beneficial, because of the clerks having to answer the phone, look documents, uh, email them or fax them to those law offices, if they're available for them, and they can have access to them, I think that's, be a good thing, especially if it's no cost to the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox, based on your previous comment, then, would you like us to make an agenda item for next week to discuss a bigger implementation?
You can, it certainly can. I think if Vanessa's going to use it, we could probably utilize it as a pilot program, so to speak, and see how she, she receives it. I mean, she can talk to the other clerks, and if, even demonstrate the program to them, and if they would like to utilize it, I mean, they could come back and.
We could maybe do a county rundown, maybe.
Well, I'd like to say on the, on one of these pages, what's next, on page 15, it says you can request our services in a test mode.
Okay, yeah, so they could try that too?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
One of, one of the things I'd like to point out, though, is with all technology, the information that you obtain from this is, is only as good as the entry.
That's right.
And there's a sentence in here that talks about court coordinators updating the information, so.
Right.
I think that's one of the things that maybe, there might need to be a discussion on who's actually going to be responsible for updating that.
Right, and the way I understood it was, is once it's put into LGS, then it automatically gets uploaded, so it's not like she has to do it, it's just that. It'll be set up for, it's just an automatic update every night, every night. But, yeah, as long as she's entering the information, then it should be fine.
And the idea, part of the idea there is that if they're not having to go and retrieve information with these requests, because somebody else is doing the subscribing, then they ought to be able to stay even more current on the updates.
Yes, it'll be able for offices to share the information as well.
Is there a term on this?
90 days.
No.
It's kind of just like an open-ended thing.
There's no, you certainly put a term on it if you want to, but I think the idea is, you stay in it as long as you're happy, and when you're not, you give 90 days' notice and get out.
Right.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to approve the professional services agreement with iDocket.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker, second, and by Commissioner Cox, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and enjoy your vacation.
I will, thank you.
Our condolences on to Ralph, please. Agenda item number nine, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly, consider and take action to approve a budget amendment to cover payments not to exceed a total of $38,100 to Texas Communications for installation of mobile radios in the Sheriff's Department vehicles, Andy Anderson, Chiro, Plantersville, Richards, Whitehall, Iola, Bedeys, and Todd Mission Fire Department's fire response apparatus, see attachment number nine. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners.
Go ahead and put this in the bed.
Yes, very much so. As this item was brought up, I don't remember exactly which Commissioners Court we had this come up originally with the amendment, but Commissioners Court tabled it pending, having a workshop with the fire chiefs to resolve issues as far as how we're going to take care of maintenance of the radios. As you remember, we did have that workshop, and the fire chiefs agreed that they would cover the cost of routine maintenance of the radios. They were under the understanding, somehow they came to the understanding or the assumption that they were expected to pay the fee for the radios that we have on BBWAX, that monthly fee that we paid. And once they said, basically, that, oh, if we're not having to pay that, that's not a problem, we have no problem with paying for maintenance, you know, replacing radios if we need to, or replacing parts. So, I feel that we got resolution there. Of course, that was not an action item, but I feel that we did get resolution there. So, now I'm bringing this before the Commissioners Court again to readdress the amendment, so we can complete this process and get back on track with the remaining installations.
Mr. Lilly, and maybe Chief Green can speak to this. Now, in our discussion on April 8th, Monday, April 8th, with the fire departments about the 700, 800 radios, we talked about adding the remaining departments, which were, we still had some outstanding departments that had not received that radio, right?
Yes, Iola, Richards, no, I'm sorry, Iola, Anderson, Bedeys, and Todd Mission.
Okay.
Richards, Plantersville, Chiro, and Whitehall all have already been installed. That was a part of the original breakdown of the cost, and the remaining four departments are still pending.
Okay, well, I see an additional, on the numbers you sent me, additional radios, and I'm not quite sure what that is.
Yes, ma'am. Are you talking about the radio count that is a part of our BBWAX budget line item for next year?
No, right now, I'm talking about the information you sent us, were there, 27?
For the Sheriff's Department. Yes, ma'am. That was an additional invoice that I authorized back in November, and to be honest, that had slipped my mind when I was addressing all these invoices, because I was focused on the fire departments. But the Sheriff's Office for the initial install, we needed to get that done also, and that was accomplished in November. So, upon discussing this with the auditors, they said, "Let's just put everything under the same special project and include that with the amendment, so we can keep everything clean, keep everything, you know, in line with what that special project is for."
So, what you're giving us is for the installs?
Yes, ma'am.
It, and the installs will then have subscription fees that accompany the install?
Yes, ma'am. You had a question also about the actual total count, because we did get a report back from, from Thomas Gilbert on what our projected number's going to be for next year, and you had a question about that, why the difference. I did check with Thomas on that. The original amount, what we're paying this year is, and Mary, if I get this wrong, just let me know, but the count that we're supposed to be paying, that we're paying on for this year is 209 radios total, that includes mobile and handhelds. And the actual accurate count, Todd and I did an inventory of what we actually got issued, came down to 191, all right? So, we'd already agreed to pay for 209, so we're now currently adding, this includes radios that have not been installed in the fire department vehicles, by the way. So, all the radios that we have in county right now are 191, and he said that we are projected to go up to 199 after one October. But then, the total amount that we're projected for, 291, that does include the radios for Navasota. And again, that was also discussed in that workshop, I remember Thomas was here, and he talked about those numbers. So, that's where that increase is coming from. And then, Navasota had said that they would cover their portion of that cost for the maintenance fee also. Either we pay it and they reverse, or however they're going to work that.
That's what we said.
So, that, that's where that, that change in that number came from.
Okay, thank you. So, for 200, I mean, for 2019, we'll pay for 209 radios. Have you been billed that already?
We're billed monthly only.
You bill monthly?
Is it monthly or quarterly?
I thought he said it's billed after the, like, the bill for this coming year would be coming in after October.
No, and they, they set, they give a count of the radios and stuff at the first part of the year, and then in April, they meet, they verify those numbers, and then that sets the budget for the next fiscal year. And I can't remember if it's monthly or quarterly that we get billed for the service.
And it may be quarterly, I'm not up on that, ma'am, I'd have to look into that, but I was thinking it was a monthly charge, that we're, we're prorated the cost based on a monthly charge, and, but it's all to, however the BBWAX Board actually assigns the budget. And, again, I don't have, I don't know whether it's monthly or quarterly either.
I'm thinking it's monthly.
You received a statement for 2020?
Yes, but I didn't mind it one day today, but, yes, I did.
Okay, so, when 2020 comes, you're not, that's what you're going to be paying in 2020?
Yes.
In 2020, okay. But you've already paid for 2019, is that what you're saying?
Well, we pay it on a monthly basis.
Some portion.
They bill us monthly for that service.
I'm asking, because I thought I heard him tell us that even when Navasota came on, they, we would not be billed until 2020.
That's correct.
2020.
Any additions or deletions throughout the year, once they set the budget in April for, for the next year, it stays that way.
Okay, I got you.
And just for the record also, I do have a copy of the breakdown for this year and for next year of BBWAX allocations. The per-radio amount that we pay per year is $243.77 per radio, and that breaks down monthly is $20.31 per radio, that's this year. Next year's going.
So, the monthly of this year?
Monthly is $20.31 per radio.
Okay.
That's going down, projected, they have, and again, as Mary said, they've already got the number plugged in, it's going down to, from $243.77 to $210.61 per radio per year, and from $20.31 down to 1755 per radio per month. So, as I said, as more radios get added to the system, the, the individual radio cost will go down for the year.
Economy of scale.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we, we've paid for four departments to have those radios installed, am I correct?
Yes, we've already processed the payments for those first four departments.
Plus the Sheriff's Department?
Plus the Sheriff's Department. The remaining ones are projected costs, that's an estimate based on what, and that's high-side, but that's based on what Texas Communications anticipates the remaining departments will cost.
Why is there such a disparity in installation cost for each department? Well, you've got six in Chiro, and that was $25.40, you've got six in Whitehall, that was $35.18, and you've got six in Iola, which was $3,500. So, installation prices per radio range from $200 up to $700.
It depends on each individual truck, how much work they have to do to adapt that truck to be able to have the radio installed. And some of them, they had to actually, you know, make adaption, changes to the console, or to the dash of the truck, to be able to fit the radio in. Other ones, it was much simpler to do. And keep in mind, a lot of the, each department, they have in their inventory, their trucks, they vary widely from make and model, years and so on, and some, and it's the same thing with the Sheriff's Office, most of the Sheriff's Department vehicles, Clive, you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but most of the vehicles are already suited for this, so they didn't have to do much adaption for the, for the Sheriff's Office vehicles, because they're already designed for most of these. for most of these types of radios, whereas the Fire Department trucks were not in some cases.
So I noticed that, is this going to be included in the special budget? Where's the money coming from and where is it going to be applied?
That's in the budget amendment that was on number seven. No, it was on number eight, is part of it.
Yeah, I understand that. Where's it, where are we getting the money? And where will you apply it in his budget?
On balance, and we'll apply it to special projects.
So there's currently a $14,140 negative balance in special projects, is that correct?
Well, it will be closer to the $19,000 because the Sheriff's Department is not included in that $14,000. And the $14,000 consisted of Plantersville, Richards, Whitehall, and Shiro. And then you add the five on top of that, which would be 19,62.
Plus the 1,500 from this morning?
Plus what?
The 1,500 from the budget amendment or line item transfer this morning? I'm assuming that has something to do with it.
Yes, so I was moved in there to try and offset some of this cost.
Yes.
Because I had some surplus in my travel and conference budget. I was getting back for a conference later this month, but it was not absolutely mission critical to Joe today.
Actually, no, that is not, that's not true. The line item transfer was to cover the clearing of the easement.
The tower.
Yes.
Which we may get reimbursed.
Right. But as far as that is, he needed, that was for the easement, and so he was covering that by moving some of his travel and conference into there to cover that.
That's my mistake. I was thinking I was saying, getting my special projects all bunched together.
They are all coded to special projects, but you're specifically talking about the radios.
We're specifically talking about the radios because originally, the special projects was the B-Dyes Tower. So if we're going to do a budget amendment today, don't you think it needs some clarity as far as if we said install of radios or something? This, hopefully, we won't have this line item again or what? Because this was never in the line.
It was not. It was not budgeted at the beginning of the year, no. That's why we're here. The budget amendment would not be prepared until after everything is installed and we have final numbers. All he's telling you is that on the agenda is basically, I'm assuming, getting approval to go ahead and finish installing the radios for the four apparatuses. And then, then, once all of that is done, he's anticipating it not to exceed 32,000. And once it's completed, if it comes in under, there will be a budget amendment for the exact amount.
And actually, not to exceed 38.1?
Or 38, I don't have any-
And there's also some money that we will, or some credit we will get back from Texas Communications of just over $1,000, where they overcharged on some things like for number of hours it took to installations. They did, they did credit some of that back to us already. That was reflected on the original invoices that we paid. But there's just over $1,000 that will be credited to a subsequent future invoice. So that, that portion will come back. So actually, the number should be closer than 37,000. It's 37.80. I don't know if you want to round that up or down, but-
So if this amendment's approved, that will clear up the negative balance in the special project line and pay for the radios? Is that what I understand?
We are strictly just talking about the radios. Now, if he's-
Installed.
Yeah, the installation. Assuming that there is no other expenses that are coded to that in there, then yes, it should clear it up. And you will, you'll continue to see that deficit run until he's completely finished with the project.
Are there any-
But yes, it's, that is the goal, is to clear it up.
Are there any other special projects?
Just the tower. There's some remaining expenses that we're still waiting for reimbursement from the cog on, and they're working diligently to try and get that resolved. I was talking with Roger Sheridan just on Monday about that, and they are working with the GLO to try and recoup those costs. And we're talking like, the clearing of the easement was actually $800. We submitted an invoice to the cog for that one. The, drawing up the easement surveys that we had to do for Energy before they were pressed forward, that was $1,380. And also, that's also been invoiced to the cog. And the last one, which has already been reimbursed, or should be reimbursed to us by now, was the 7,200 or so, I don't remember the exact amount, that was for the actual installation, what we had to pay that upfront to Energy. That, those are the expenses that we're trying to get reimbursed from the cog on, and that'll come back into that special project line item or cover the cost of that. Because that's the only other special project I have, is the B-Dyes Tower.
Were the, the radios, Chief Green, can I ask you, were these radios anticipated at the beginning of the year?
This, this project was, this week started on Mistress Court, on the, y'all special projects, special agendas, that y'all did survey with St. Houston. It was identified with County Judge Lemonon.
On the strategic plan?
Yeah, on, you know, strategic plan. And as we gone through the process, I think there was probably some kind of disconnect on what was going on, because all I knew is they got approved, and we were told to install radios. They were advised that they were being taken care of by the court. And that's what we did. We got a new system, we installed radios, and we stepped forward. As far as proper planning of procedure and getting it all budgeted, I can't test it out, because y'all-
So it was never, never, ever in your budget?
No.
Okay.
If there was a need to put it in our budget, I would, when we sold it back, I would have put it in our budget that we needed extra more funds for the installs of those radios. But it was always told us, it's being taken care of, and so we installed radios.
So this is all of your radios that you've needed?
Yeah, and going forward, we are installing them all.
Do your budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion? On Agenda Item Number Nine?
I move that we approve the budget amendment to cover payments not to exceed a total of $38,100 to Texas Communications for installation of mobile radios in the Sheriff's Department vehicles and the Anderson, Shiro, Plantersville, Richards, Whitehall, Iola, B-Dyes, and Todd Mission Fire Departments Response Apparatus.
Sir. There's a motion before the Court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion?
Yes. I don't know how we got here. Oversight, lack of attention to detail. But I hope that we don't get ourselves involved in a situation like this again.
Fair enough. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Ten, County Attorney John C. Foltz. Consider and take action to review, modify, or terminate interlocal agreement with the City of Iola regarding services for onsite sewer facilities. See Attachment Number Ten. Attachment Number Ten, we have the current interlocal agreement with the City of Iola. We have the current city agreement, interlocal agreement with B-Dyes. And then we have a blank document to be billed in if necessary. Mr. Foltz?
Yes, Judge.
And I will like to recognize that we have the Mayor of Iola with us this morning. Mr. Foltz?
You will recall, we had this conversation a week or so ago about how to continue the relationship where the DRs for the county serve the needs of the City of Iola. And there had been some confusion and maybe some friction between the two entities. I was not aware of all of the details, though I had spoken with the county folks. And I think there's a desire for the Court to give some direction about how their office ought to proceed. And as we left it off last time, one option would be to do away with the interlocal, another would be to clean up the interlocal, and another would probably be to leave it as it is. I know, or at least I have suspected, that the city continues to work towards trying to obtain a waste, or funding for a wastewater treatment plant. That's the ultimate solution here, I suspect. And you don't have any control over their timetable, per se. How willing you are to continue to offer county services to them may be incentive or disincentive one way or the other. Have you looked at that? For them to expedite what they're doing, I know I talked to the Mayor yesterday or the day before, and I understand they're continuing to work towards that end. The other option, as we talked about, is potentially for them to acquire their own DR and have their own employee, if this relationship can't be worked out. I suspect that there has been a miscommunication or a misunderstanding of the roles or the expectations or something. And realistically, I think you just need to flesh it out, whether it's in this meeting, this setting or not, and decide how the Court as a whole is going to move forward in this arrangement. I understand there has been additional requests, though, that if the interlocal continues, there has been circumstance in the past where information was being sought mid-investigation, which then potentially leads folks to find fault with how the investigation is going. If you intend to keep the interlocal, I think the request would be, from the county's standpoint, that investigation materials or the results of investigation only be released upon the completion of an investigation so as to allow the folks doing the investigation to not have the complaints or calls or folks insisting on directing the investigation when that's supposed to be left to the, to the folks with the county. So I just opened it up. You have all, I think, the players that you need before you to have the conversation. Don't really need me, but I was asked to put it on the agenda, and I was almost cursed when my name and title were called beside this item. So because we're at 9:45 now, I-
But sir, you're always needed. Sometimes not as much as others, but you're always needed.
And often cursed, but nobody likes a lawyer until you need one.
All right. Mayor, do you have any comments, certainly, on this situation that you'd like to share? And if you do, I'd ask that you come to the podium so we get you on the microphone. For those that might not know, if you'd identify yourself first.
I am Christina Stover, the Mayor of Iola for past 11 years, first mayor. I can't speak other than we've been diligent, diligent working towards this sewer treatment plant. We're fixing to take out a 0% interest loan. We've got 500,000, what are they called? Economical disadvantage. So we are fixing to move forward with design. We simply have not scored high enough for this to happen faster. I've got citizens in my face every day asking me, why isn't this done? What's taking so long? But I can assure you that we've been working diligently. When we started, we knew that we were a poor community, and this court has been very generous to keep these interlocals for us, and we appreciate them. We would not be able to function without them. I have asked too many questions, but I, I'm used to being informed on a situation. My questions may have been taken out of context a little, but there was a lot of confusion, a lot of citizens asking me questions that I could not answer. I have my answers, and I'm satisfied. And whatever way you feel we need to proceed, we can proceed.
What is, since we currently have an interlocal agreement with the City of Iola, what would be your preference? And I guess the preference is remain what we have, update the agreement that we have, or whatever option three might be?
That, that would be our preference, I'm sure, that we just update what we have. I mean, I understand that you have an interlocal with B-Dyes?
B-Dyes, yes, ma'am.
Do y'all, have y'all had to use that very often, since they now have a wastewater treatment plant? I mean, as far as the city limits go, you shouldn't have had to, right?
I can't answer that question, but Kat?
We have discussed, we have one complaint-
Can I get you to come stand under one of the microphones?
(laughing).
Come stand by the mayor.
We have spoken with Mayor Boyan, and she has expressed that she is going to request that our services come in and handle a complaint within the city. That's just happened recently.
And that's as of now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But prior to, as of now, have you had much interaction?
We had one other complaint when my predecessor, Marissa, was here. We had to go in and investigate sewer on top of the ground.
Okay.
Judge, if I can comment on that?
Sure.
The mayor is correct that you have a wastewater treatment plant, so most people are connected to a sewer line.
Right.
The issue that they were seeking help with was an individual who refused to connect to the sewer. And so I think that's the reason the interlocal was created.
Got you. Okay. All right, thank you.
It is our intention to have everyone required to-
To the system, once you get to the system.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you have any idea how long it is going to take?
I'd like to say five years. The engineers would like to say three.
And the citizens like two weeks?
Yes. And so do I. So do I.
I had a question. I was confused a while ago when you said you've taken out a 0% loan for design? Is that what you said?
Yes.
For design. Okay. Now, it's a match that's required for the grant that you're hoping to put in, help put in the system? And your match, we understand, is quite a bit, right?
Well, they have an economically distressed areas program that was not funded, excuse me, at all for several years. And then they came up with a new scoring system for it, and we did very well, but they only had enough funds. They only, they only fund that 50 million every two years, so far. Now, I wanted to speak with Representative Lemonon about it. He said there was a bill on the floor of the House that was going to positively affect our, our status in the EDA program. We were number six of eight in the scoring this last time. Funding was cut off at four. So our hope is that we can take this loan out and then proceed for the construction portion, which is, of course, the most expensive with the EDA program. If we, if we have to try to figure it out another way, of course we will. But our financial advisor did finally clear up what we've been, what we've been doing all these years is telling people when they come ask us to clean up the strays and and make, make things happen, we tell them we can't afford to do anything but this sewer treatment plant. And our financial advisor did confirm that. We are very fortunate we will be able to make this, this payment. But because we've, we've run on a tight budget, we're able to. It will not be a problem.
And I realize that back in 2012, this agreement looks like it was based around the construction of a sewer system?
Yes. When, when that was written, there was, I don't want to go into too much backlash history, but there was, the, the state of Texas came to us and said, if you file a complaint on your neighbor, we are going to investigate you as well. Because probably 90% of, I mean, they're all bad. All of our OSSF, they're, they're old, they're failing. There are a few aerobic systems in town, and when we got inspected by the health inspector, they wanted to know who in the world licensed those. They weren't appropriate for the size of the lots. So we were told, if you make a complaint, you're going to be investigated.
The city?
If, no, if, if a citizen makes a complaint against their neighbor, you're going to be investigated as well.
It would be the city?
No.
No, the individual-
Oh, the complainer.
The, the property owner.
Got you, okay.
So what's happened is a property owner, we've, no one's complained. I think there's been one complaint in the past, and it was, it was passed over. I think there's been one complaint in the past, and it was, it was passed over. But we've had a complaint that's been pretty persistent, the complainant, and that has spurred into now, I think, six complaints, because they were not investigated in the same manner that, you know, and if things change over 10 years, that's fine. That's all they had to do was tell us, "We don't have to investigate them. Things have changed in 10 years." But they did not. Instead, they said, "You're not understanding. You're only hearing what you want to hear." There was a lot, there was a lot of very harsh words directed towards the city regarding this. So that's where all of my questions came from. I'm not trying to run an investigation.
And the harsh words came from?
The state.
Okay.
The state of Texas, TCEQ, to be exact. We were told that we were ignorant rednecks, and everyone in Grimes County knows it. So, you know, this is where some of my questions have been spurred from, because I need to know the answers to talk to my citizens. I explained to them that as elected officials, that was really hurting us in town. Because, you know, for 11 years, we've said, "If you file a complaint, you're going to be investigated as well." Because their sewer runs in the ditch, too, the people that made the original complaint. So they weren't investigated. They weren't investigated, and now there's six more complaints. They actually came and asked us to make it, and we told them we would not. As city council, we will not file a complaint against our own residents, because we all know the sewer treatment plant is the ultimate solution. It's the only thing legal to fix this situation. So...
May I ask you another question, ma'am? You're saying that TCEQ said that to you in 2012?
When the complaint was made about the investigations against the complaints?
I'm lost.
The first, that is not the first one, I don't believe. I believe there was one before that interlocal. We've had an interlocal in place for a really long time.
This is 2012, right?
This under Judge Shifflin.
Seven years? Okay, maybe that is the first one. Yes, all of these things were said then.
But y'all haven't called rednecks in a while.
No, we were called rednecks about a month and a half ago.
Month and a half ago, okay.
Ignorant rednecks.
Okay. My next question to you was, are you aware that this, so this document had not been looked at since 2012, and it was based upon the idea of the city getting a new sewer treatment plant? So I think that's where we are now, is to revisit the idea of, is this contract, I guess, really valid, or it needs updating, or it needs to be done away with or something, because it is based upon something that hasn't transpired and probably won't be transpiring for three to five years? Is that what you're saying?
I don't see it happening any faster.
And so, as you can see, there's a lot of confusion surrounding what TCEQ says, what the city says, what the designated representatives are saying, and it's gotten extremely confusing.
It is very confusing, especially...
Even following the emails, it's very confusing. And so there is some concern on this department's being in the middle of so much confusion and us going out investigating complaints that we now charge B-DiS $200 to do nuisance complaints. So we have to make it at least fair amongst the interlocals we have. It's the way I see it, that if we're going to receive complaints, if we're going to charge B-DiS, then Iola needs to be charged. And at the least, if we're not going to do away with this interlocal, because what you, what she's saying, what I hear her saying is, because they don't have a sewer system, there are going to be a lot of complaints generated.
We were, there haven't been in 11 years, and now we have six. It is because of the way the situation has been handled, and now we just need to move forward.
And your idea of moving forward is?
Come to an agreement that y'all are happy with, and I will stay out of the, I will stay out of the way. I mean, I won't ask any more questions. I'll wait for the reports to come, like the attorney suggested.
Would, would do you understand that if we enter into another agreement with the $200 fee, like we charge B-DiS, then that fee comes to the city of Iola?
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure.
Of course I do.
We're all on the same page. We're all hearing the same thing.
The only place, may I please say this, the only place I have had misunderstanding is when I was told one thing, and then the opposite has been done. The city is being honest and upfront, and if I do something wrong, I'm going to own up to it. I was asked by someone in the right position, in a position, in an elect, let's see, an employee asked me, I'm trying not to go here, y'all. Someone asked me, "Would you like me to file a complaint anonymously for the city? Because that original complaint didn't get investigated." And I said, "Absolutely not." That is why I asked, "Where are these complaints coming from?" Because I don't know who was making them. That's the only confusion that we have. And I now, like I said, that's been cleared up. I got a, a letter on my desk from TCEQ that said who the anonymous complaint was. Complaints aren't really anonymous, so it's all cleared up. I'm over it. I'm ready to move forward. The whole, the whole city council is. We have that. We only wish that we didn't have this happening at all. We wish there weren't six complaints, but there are. My only regret is I haven't recorded phone calls, and I'm not going there. Not going to do it.
Okay. So if we, if we revise or update the interlocal agreement with the city of Iola, the city of Iola and the council would most probably be acceptable of that and happy with that?
Yes, I would take it to them, and they would discuss it, and they surprise me all the time, but I'm sure they would be. We want whatever is best for the sewer treatment project to happen. Now, the state has said if they come and induce fines, it will be on the city. We understand that. We've told them if that's what they need to do, that's what they need to do. That is not, that is not an issue that y'all should have to worry about because you have an interlocal with us. I mean, this isn't on y'all. Like I said, we really appreciate every bit of help we've, we've still had.
Sure. Okay.
Especially law enforcement and roads.
Judge, I have a question. Okay, if you hold that question. Judge, you have any thoughts or comments? Because some of them come through your court.
I understand, being born and raised in Iola and B-DiS areas, what they're faced with, and there's no doubt that we're a support community. And my fear is, is once it's started, this is going to be continuing. There's going to be many more of these complaints filed, because as the mayor stated, this is not just three or four houses that are in violation. It's probably 90% of the town, 90% of my precinct. What I am fearful of is that if we keep this interlocal agreement, and Kat and Angela have to do their investigations and end up having to issue citations at some point in time, folks, I want you to realize, most of these people can't pay the fine, much less fix their system. What do we do? Where, where are we at on this? Kat and Angela can both tell you, the ones that we've had outside the city limits, I've been very generous, trying to give 30 days, give them opportunity to fix the problem. They're going to have to spend money. I want them to be able to take that money and put it towards getting their system compliant. That's what the end goal is here, is having everybody comply. Some of them, I'm on, I know Angela called me yesterday. We got one, I've given up, this is 60 days now, I think Thursday's, and I'm trying everything I can to work with these folks to get their systems compliant, because I don't want it to come down. Because I realize, they're not going to be able to pay the fines. You put a $500 fine on for their system, it's not going to get fixed. And with the way the legislature changed the laws, you know, two years ago, when it comes to paying tickets in our courts, if you're on any form of government assistance, y'all might could go off for indigency. We have to offer you community service. If you can't do that, then we end up having to, what, lower court cost and fine, and worst-case scenarios, waive in court cost and fines. So if we do that, we're just, we're running a circle. We're not fixing the problem. I don't have the answer. You know, when this all came about two months ago, I rely on my dad a lot for advice, because he's done this for 16 years. And when I told him what was going on, he said, "I'm glad you're JP and not me, because this is going to be a headache." And, and, I mean, I, I realize, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, be the middleman here. I just, I want everyone to understand that if, if this keeps going, I'm, I'm afraid it's going to spur a lot of controlling. There's just going to be many more of these complaints filed. I mean, my office sits right in the middle of town. I've been there a whole lot. There's no doubt, we have a problem, and something needs to be done. And I realize the city's been working on this for, for a number of years, trying to get there, but we're still, realistically, five years down the road. And I hate to tell you, but in five years, the sewage is still going to be running down the ditch until this gets built. Because they can tell you, they had a phone call with one of the persons that was complained on, he straight up told them, "I know my sewage is running in the ditch. What's not running in the ditch is running under my house. I cannot pay to fix it." Point blank told them that on the phone. What do you do? What do you do? So, I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I've got to do, if the citations end up in my office, I have to do my job, but I just want you to realize that folks can't pay this. So what, what do we do?
I've got a question for you. So if the county is issuing citations, and the citations then go to the city, to me that?
Well, the citations, if they issue, if the county is investigating and issues the citation to the homeowner or property owner, this is violation, it's going to come to, it's going to be filed in my office. It won't be filed with county, because the city of, I mean, it won't be filed with city. City of Iola doesn't have a municipal judge. They, they, I mean, the American Act is at its point in time, but if, if the county is going to issue the citation to homeowners, it's going to end up being filed in my office, with my office.
And then, so the, according to the interlocal that we have with B-DiS, who would then be responsible for the complaint fee, the nuisance fee?
I don't know what you're asking, Commissioner.
With the city of Iola, when they, when they receive a nuisance, Kat, maybe you can speak to that, when they receive the $200 fee, who receives the $200 fee?
I would invoice the city for the $200 fee, and it would come to me, and then it would go into the general fund.
Okay, that's where I was going with that.
Right, right. I was confused. I thought you were talking about the citation.
No, and I was saying...
No, if the city, the city will be billed by Kat and then for the $200 to investigate.
And to me, that just adds, kind of adds to the bill that you're already facing.
That sounds...
And if you, according to judges, sound like you're going to be facing quite a few of them, so I don't know how TCEQ handles it from their end.
If TCEQ, if we did not have an interlocal, and TCEQ had to act as their DR, they have a minimum, I believe, of a $500 fee.
Two.
That would be to the city for that handling that complaint, is what I was told from TCEQ.
And from what I've gathered, if, if there's no interlocal agreement, and TCEQ is the one doing investigating and all of that, then that's between the city and the state. We're out of it.
Correct.
And where would you like to be?
I mean, I would, I would hope and pray that this is able, this project is able to be completed in a timely manner, if, if, I mean, the city needs to. I mean, the city, as far as I'm concerned, there's no new, there's no new growth in the city as far as people moving in, building homes, or adding to...
Not in the city limits.
Not in the city limits. Now, you go right outside the city limits, there's plenty of it. So to me, the towns actually went down a little bit. So I think the only thing that's going to revive it is getting this in, getting this system and this project installed and that, but that's what I'm saying. But until it does, I'm afraid this, the can of worms has been opened now, and when does it stop?
May I speak to the growth deal? City Limits is very small, and no, there's not a lot of new construction in town. There's not new construction in town. We have seen quite a few people refurbishing their homes, remodeling, or maybe even swapping out completely, you know, getting a new trailer, replacing the one that they filled through, okay? Because this place has been established for a long time. But the sales tax for the city of Iola has doubled in the 10 years. So while you don't see us have a bank anymore, and you see some businesses that were shut down, the few that are in operation are going strong. Our school is still the mainstay of the town. The school really needs to be on this system as well. They're, they're fixing to face about a $250,000 repair job, just to keep theirs going, and they're, they're having to deal with TCEQ as well.
Commissioner, you got a question?
Yes. I'm confused here on the anonymous reporting of complaints.
Yes.
Since this is a city issue, why aren't the complaints coming directly to you?
Texas Commission on Environmental Quality is where you file a complaint with the state regarding a, an environmental issue. I'm not sure if we had our own municipal court, if that would be, we've visited that too in the last 10 years, but we, we're not there. We need this sewer treatment plant first.
I don't think you would need a municipal court to do that. If you set up a, a policy in the city to take the complaints, for instance, I get complaints out in my precinct on sewage systems. Kat or Angela and I will go out and visit the people with them. They don't contact TCEQ. We go out and look at those.
That's great.
And then we do whatever we need to do with them. If we need to go to TCEQ, we will do that. Am I correct, Kat?
You're correct. These complaints that we're talking about, they were filed with Central Office, which is in Austin.
Okay.
And then they filtered down to Regional. And then from Regional, because we have an interlocal agreement with the city that says that the county will act as designated representatives, then from Regional, it gets filtered to our office.
Could they not do that, though? Would the city have them?
If we, well, TCEQ goes off of our interlocal agreement, because we are the DRs. They don't have a designated representative for TCEQ.
Because I know in B-DiS, the first complaint we got up there, I think Mayor Bobo called me, and Marissa and I worked with her to get that resolved, and we set up that policy, I believe, to...
Yeah, that complaint came into our office directly.
Yeah.
A citizen can make a complaint. We have complaint forms online. They can make a complaint directly to our office without going to Central Office and filtering down that way. There is a process, and that's the way that complaint came in, directly to our office.
But, but to be clear, you are a TCEQ representative when you get that complaint? So effectively, the complaint is going to the state?
Yeah.
Being the DR means they're the state representative. So it's, the law regarding OSSF is overseen by the state, and so when the complaint comes in and we feel like it's going to a county office, it's literally a county office, and the premises are county-owned, but this person's name is a DR because they represent TCEQ.
And we, we are designated representatives as well, and we have to be for our grant process.
Sure.
We have not ever invested, studied on how we would handle that ourselves. We've never had to do that. And the original complainant, I would love to meet with them and try to work things out. She will not speak to anyone. So that just didn't work for this situation.
Did I hear you say that TCEQ would fine the city?
That's what we've been told. They said they don't like to impose fines on homeowners, and that ultimately, the city would be fined for the situation. And I understand a lot of time has passed, but I did ask TCEQ, what, TCEQ, what would have been wrong with dealing with this complaint in a different way and saying, "They're doing everything they've needed to do. Let's be more patient." He called Texas Water Development Board, which is who we're getting our grant through, and asked, "What can we do to help them with their process? It's taking too long." And they said, "There's nothing you can do. They've done everything they need to do. It just hasn't been funded yet."
So if TCEQ does choose to fine the city, will the city, A, be able to pay the fines, and will that have an impact on the financing for the, that you have lined up?
When we started this 11 years ago, an engineer said to us, just in discussion, "Hey, y'all save your money, because you're going to need it for this project." And we have operated that way, and we do have some money in the bank. So I don't know what those fines might turn into, but we're okay. You know, we're, we're handling our business. We were able to purchase the property for the plant with our own funding, because the grant money wasn't there at the time. So, you know, we've, we've done okay. We've done well.
To answer your question, Commissioner Cox, were they going to do foreclos on the And if they do, what are they going to get?
A bunch of rednecks.
A bunch of rednecks, that one.
Barbecue sandwiches and rednecks.
With an excellent school.
Excuse me. Kat, if we had an interlocal with them where they paid two hundred dollar fee, like the city of B-DiS, if that fee is not paid, what then happens?
That would have to be addressed in the interlocal agreement. As to if they didn't pay the two hundred dollar fee, then what, that's between the court and the city. That would need to be addressed, I think, in the interlocal agreement. That wouldn't, that wouldn't happen.
What would happen?
Not paying the bill. I know you can't take my word for that, but it would be paid.
No, I was going to ask you, what if there were numerous?
That we'd have to pay them. If we agreed to the interlocal and there are numerous complaints, we have to pay the two hundred dollars for each complaint, we do so.
Can I ask a question? Mayor, do you know whether or not they're, and just throwing this out, do you know whether or not, because Iowa's within the county, even though it's incorporated, is there something the county can do to help facilitate a loan or a grant? I mean, with the city of B-DiS, we had to approve model subdivision rules so that the Water Development Board would give them the loan slash grant, whichever it was. Is there something the county can do? And you mentioned the school, it's got to be something available, grant or a loan available to the school to participate in the funding of this treatment plan.
We did adopt those model subdivision rules because B-DiS had done that. The way it was paid for us on a lot of things, we really, we were really hopeful in the beginning that because of all the work they had done, ours would go a little faster, but it has not. We adopted those as well. We've been asking, we've been told that we need to have a more green application, so we did that. We came up with some, some green components to score higher the next time. We've filled out, I think, four different applications over time.
But you have some firm, Jones and Carter, somebody that's facilitating...
Oh, yes, Jones and Carter.
Pursuing grants or loans that are available.
And I speak with our representatives on a regular basis and keep them all updated on our progress. I raised Cain about the E-DAP scoring process because there was none, and now there is one, and we did okay on it.
But there have been grants that have been facilitated by the county being the applicant in the past.
Right.
When there have been other entities that have been the beneficiaries of that. And I'm just saying, if there was something where the county could be the one that makes application for it, I think the court would be much happier to do that than say, "Let's put together an interlocal where we get paid a fee."
Right.
It continues to take money from the city, and we see the complaints going up, and no real resolution for at least five years. I mean, I think the county would much rather say, "Let us work to help be an applicant here if that's what it'll take."
I can find out. I know we've, we've worked on two different application processes many times, just these whole eleven years. B-DiS started with one, they had to switch to another midstream because during their project, construction costs doubled. So when we started, we said, "Let's start with what was successful for them, what they ended up being successful with." So we went with that one, and then we had to switch because that, that just wasn't getting funding from the state. So we've switched to another, now we're working both. But I will find out if there's more we can do. I will definitely, the only place we have not really worked real hard with is USDA. And when I mention that, I think, you know, that they feel like that won't be a good route, but we haven't been to the US, we've spoken with them, but we've not filled out an actual application with them. So I'll look into it.
I just think that's, we've got to get this done short of five years, we've got to get moving.
Tell me.
I know you guys, I know you guys feel that way.
Tell me.
But if the county can participate...
Yes.
Rather than just putting this patch on this thing.
I wish I could, I wish I could tell you what that thing would be to make things go faster.
I understand.
I'll try to find out.
I'll shut up.
No, it's okay.
I think you have a USDA representative in Madison County, she was years ago, about five years ago.
Sandra Niglets?
Yeah. Get with her and talk to her about that. I think she can give you some direction. And because you are a disadvantaged area, I think there would be something there that you could probably maybe match with some other grant to try to get this done.
So with that being said, if we're going to research, and I don't mind helping you look for something like that...
Well, and we've used GrantWorks in the past, and there are other entities that exist like that, and they're, I didn't necessarily mean to say to the mayor, you guys may want to, say, "Hey, Mary, you guys need to figure this out." Of course, the city council's not paid, so if you guys said, "Hey, we want to solve this problem because people in Iowa are part of our county," then you guys could say, every one of you, "I'm going to go out today and find everything I can to see whether or not there's something available." It wouldn't be a matter of unpaid or paid very little, mayor seeing what she can continue to find when she hadn't had a whole lot of success to this point, as far as cooperation or whatever it may be. You could make that commitment and say, "We're going to do all that we can to figure out what we can do." I just want to be clear, I didn't mean to put that all on her, you're welcome to do whatever it is you want to do.
Meanwhile, what do you suggest as far as the interlocal?
Well, your people, your people who are here today in the office that is the county office need direction. And they, this arose, and I told the mayor this in the phone call yesterday or whenever we talked, it was never clear to me exactly who, why the friction, who the person was with Iowa that caused the folks of the county to feel like there was some friction. The mayor says it's, it was she. And I think she's prepared now to say, "Hey, I didn't recognize that I was stepping on toes, I was trying to get questions answered because I have people up my backside wanting to know what the heck's going on." If the rules are the game, if the rules of the game are, complaint goes to the DR, the DR does their investigation, then turns over the results of the investigation, and the city pays for it but pretty much stays out of it until the results are complete, I think she just needed to know that, and I think she knows that now. And I think there's been a miscommunication, misunderstanding, a lot of folks being offended by the actions of others and not understanding how things took place or why things took place. A lot of people, you know, had their toes stepped on. I think we just be big people and figure that out, and say, "What are we going to do moving forward, knowing this is a patch? And bigger than that, let's have our eye on the ball and work really hard to solve this problem permanently if at all possible." Again, I'll shut up.
No, that was very, that was, that needed to be said, okay? Because I'm not, I wasn't sure I was receiving that in the way that you put it. And now, we understand, you're saying that in the midst of all of this confusion, you felt like in some way you added to the confusion by just trying to get your questions answered. Okay.
And the reason I should have called instead, but after some of my discussions with our TCEQ representative, they went really, really badly, I decided that I should probably speak in writing instead of on the phone till things got figured out. That's why I was doing it.
Did you ever hear from our representatives?
Yes. I know that Representative Lamont actually met with TCEQ. TCEQ was not happy with me, they said they did not understand what I thought that was going to accomplish, and that now the senator's office wanted to speak with them. So, you know, they're just in agreeance that the sewer treatment plant is what needs to happen, and they just don't want to see anything hinder that.
As far as the interlocal agreement, I feel like we need to treat all of them the same, and we're going to charge B-DiS two hundred dollars per investigation, and charge Iowa two hundred dollars per investigation, and any city that comes in moving forward, if we're going to act as their representative, then we need to have our employees compensated and the county compensated for that.
And maybe revisit the agreement we have as far as what happens after the nuisance complaint is filed and how that procedure works, like she said. This blank, I don't know where the blank one came from, but it kind of confused me.
There may be one newer than 2007. I know we've revisited one that had 911 and two or three things.
Our's 2010.
On it, okay. I wasn't sure if OSSF was on that newer one.
Where'd you see 2010?
I don't think they were. No?
I mean, July 10, 2012.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, this agreement calls for law enforcement, roads, 911 services, and nuisance inspections. So right now, I guess we're just only handling nuisance inspections in the city of Iowa? Or do we do other things in the city of Iowa?
We have interlocal addresses, road bridge issues, 911, I think the address, which I think is a separate agreement.
Yes.
So there is another agreement out there that's just like B-DiS?
B-DiS may not have one from 2010, just like ours, since their situation was...
No, I want to know if y'all have one like B-DiS, that it addresses all of the services?
Yes, it just doesn't have nuisance investigations in it, because it's already had the old one with the nuisance investigation.
Okay, so we missing an agreement here?
Yeah, we don't have the Iowa road bridge, 911, we don't have that one either.
Does it have, it doesn't have nuisance, it doesn't have nuisance in it? So that's a separate agreement, this was addressing nuisance.
Yeah, B-DiS originally had a separate agreement also, then we added a nuisance agreement to it.
Okay, maybe that's what you keep saying, we have an agreement.
Sorry to interrupt anything with me. I was not even going to talk. I wasn't unless you had a question I could answer, I wasn't.
That's what I think at the beginning of everything.
So Commissioner Malat, do I hear you saying that if we were to redo the agreement, then it would need to read, or, that was Commissioner Dobinsky, like the agreements we have with the other cities?
Yes. They need to be consistent.
Yep.
I agree.
Let me see, so I think the court, I was asking for it to remind me, I think the blank one is what we originally drafted, and then everybody suggested, "Let's combine them all." And so the one that is signed from 18 is the only one, the only interlocal that exists now, B-DiS, that covers everything. The other cities do not have one that includes that nuisance paragraph in the interlocal, but includes all the other stuff. Correct. We can certainly use the same framework. I'm saying to you that I have heard from our environmental department that they'd like at least to have an announced policy from their office that when a request is made for information, that it won't be released until the investigation is done. I don't know if your interlocal should go into that kind of detail. I mean, that can certainly be, you tell the department this how it's going to be. If they run into friction with the cities, what you're doing is, you're taking taxpayer dollars where folks are paying extra allowance to the entire county and other sources of revenue, and you're saying, "We're going to fund these employees, and now we're going to send them to do work within municipalities."
Right.
And the question really you have to answer is, is that fair to the constituents of the entire county? For this place to pay for work over here, for this place to pay for work over here, you have to decide when it's of benefit to the county and worthy of the county taxpayer dollar to do that. If you're paying these folks to go and do that work, and I'm not saying this is the case, so don't hear me say this, but if they're getting pushed back, or they're getting folks that are making their lives difficult, or their job difficult, you have to analyze whether that's something you want to continue to fund. So I'm not saying you have to add that provision to their interlocal if you want to be consistent across the board, you can make it just like B-DiS, and you can tell your folks, "Here's the policy, here's the thing, you guys are in charge, and if this goes awry, you come back and let us know, and we're getting out of this thing." Or you could make it more complicated than that, I guess, and maybe it's less, put in your interlocal with B-DiS and Iowa both, the terms we're talking about, no results of the investigation, or no information about the investigation, be released until it's over. Just if you're going to do it for Iowa, I think you go back and do it for B-DiS, but I'm not sure it's worthy of putting in the interlocal, and you just tell your department, "You guys be in charge." I mean, that's, that's the deal, you're in charge.
And I'm a fast learner, and I learned real fast on this one, that would be beneficial to me as well, to not have information until the investigation's over. It really would.
So it sounds like this interlocal that we currently have needs to go away, until something else.
I'm not taking any questions today, Commissioner.
You're not taking any questions? Well, Commissioner Malat, are you taking any questions?
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, we should treat it all in cities the same, and I think for any other interlocal agreement, probably even with, with Plantersville even, we may not have this situation, but it probably should be in that interlocal agreement as well.
So I think this would be appropriate time for you to make a motion.
Okay.
Well, is it a twenty day, how can we rework that?
Which, what?
Do we cancel the current one? It's a twenty day notice, is that correct? And then we can have the, a new one drawn up?
Yeah, let me look back, Ken.
It says twenty days' notice to, to the other party.
Right. You could authorize notice to the city of the termination upon the condition of an agreement to, subsequent interlocal that contains the same terms as those in the B-DiS interlocal.
There you go.
And you just made that motion, right?
Yes. Can y'all, note takers captured that? Oh, play it back on the video. Is that your motion, sir?
That'd be my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Malat, seconded by Commissioner Dobinsky. Do I dare ask, but I will, is there any further discussion?
Yes. Could you give me that motion again?
Play back.
Essentially, he's asking that we, that we as a county issue the notice, which it really means to me.
Issue the notice to terminate current agreement.
But the termination is conditioned upon entry into a subsequent agreement, which will be an interlocal that contains the same terms as the interlocal with B-DiS.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 11, County Judge Joe Fath considering to take action regarding the burn ban, unauthorized County Judge's signatory. My recommendation, from what I understand, is we don't need to put a burn ban in place, we've got more rain due, starting any time today. Therefore, we go to agenda item number 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Dobinsky, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.